Call to order.
Call to order.
Yeah, just say you want to start, uh, start the meeting with standard pledge of allegiance.
Call to order. Please stand, salute the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, the wisdom, liberty and justice for all. I wanna welcome, uh, to all watching at home, uh, today is October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Let's have a roll call.
Ms. Doughty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mayor Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Rossi?
Here.
One absent, six present.
Special Order of Business, uh, three point one, we have spotlight on excellence, Stockloso Middle School, School of Recognition for the year twenty twenty-five. So Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, excuse me, and also school committee members. This is a really sort of pleasurable moment, uh, where we can share with you the great news of what's going on at the Stockloso School. Um, it's been through many, many years of hard work. They are this year recognized by the state of Massachusetts as a school of recognition. But, uh, that is, though it's come about this year, has been down to many years of hard work and steady progress led by, uh, Principal Jim Cardacey and his wonderful staff. I'd like to invite them to address you and congratulate them.
Thank you, um, members of the school committee, Mr. Vice Mayor, central office staff. Um, as Mr., um, Principal Skinner, uh, Principal, Superintendent Skinner. Old days, right? Superintendent Skinner, uh, clearly outlined that this is many years of hard work and we have a fraction of the staff here today. Obviously, it's, it's all staff, students, and also central office staff had a significant amount, uh, to do with our success. There's tons of hard work over, you know, the past, I'd say, three or four years. Um, everything from, uh, data-driven instruction to hiring staff, uh, so on and so forth. But I do not wanna take all this, so I'm gonna call up a couple of the Stockloso staff just to say a few words.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBaptist and this is my third year teaching at the Stockloso Middle School. On behalf of the students and staff, I'd like to thank you for recognizing our community. We are incredibly proud to be named a school of recognition by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Although I teach ELA, I've had to sharpen my math skills since joining the Stockloso team. Anyone who knows our principal, Mr. Cardacey, understands his deep passion for data. Because of his enthusiasm for numbers and data-driven decision-making, our staff has become intentional and strategic in the classroom to ensure the greatest impact on student learning. The commitment to data doesn't end with the adults. The students are just as engaged. They often ask about their progress and are highly motivated to continue growing academically. It's no small feat to make enough progress to earn such a distinguished award, and for that, we are both grateful and proud. Thank you again for recognizing our hard work and success. And remember, if you ever find yourself in a conversation with Mr. Cardacey, be prepared to crunch numbers quickly and back up your decisions, or at least have a calculator ready. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Stinson. I have been a paraprofessional in the Lowell Public Schools for thirty-six years. This is my thirty-seventh. Um, the paraprofessionals at the Stockloso, they work tirelessly to help our students succeed, both for themselves and for their families. I am very proud to be a member of such a supportive team, especially with the, the great teachers and staff that we have. Thank you again for this wonderful honor and recognition. Thank you.
Thank you again, and congratulations, Stockloso. If school committee members have questions or comments, I'm sure they will be happy to respond.
Ms. Doughty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, Vice Chair. Um, my question, it's any one of you who wants to come up and answer. What do you think has made the biggest difference? I mean, there's a, you've had tremendous amount of growth, um, and it's been consistent and sustained over multiple years. And maybe could you point to one or two factors that you think have really been game changers for the Stockloso School?
I think not only do we have a fantastic team, but we really have adopted this idea of a culture of improvement. Um, and it's been adopted by our entire school community as a whole. Like Ruth said, it's from our students to our paraprofessionals, to the custodians in our building.
Can you speak to the microphone?
Yep, from the custodians in our building to like our school nurse, to our principal, like, there is a wholehearted, genuine attempt at filling the needs of the entire school student population. And I think that's what we are most proud of, and it's that data-driven approach. Our teachers will really stop at nothing to give our students what they need on a very consistent basis. And as a school administrator, I'm so proud of that.
Thank you, and I would tell you, I am proud of that too. Thank you all for the work you do every day for our students and our families.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanna add my congratulations. Um, you know, I, I, I think that at the end of the day, we know that the, the real magic in all of our schools happen in our classrooms. And it's the people who are standing at the front of those classrooms, the, the ones who are working every day with our, with our students, um, who make these great gains. And having the appropriate support from administration and all that, that makes it possible. But, you know, the, the secret sauce is, uh, the work that's happening at the, at, at every classroom and at every desk in our, our district. And it's just wonderful to be able to celebrate real, uh, this kind of success story for our students. So thank you all very much for your commitment.
Mr. Bahu?
Um, and I just wanna echo my fellow school committee, um, members, um, graces and congratulations towards you. Ultimately, um, you've all paid, you, you've all worked very hard, and it hasn't been over one year or two years, but it's been over multiple years, as Mr. Cardacey, um, alluded, alluded to. And ultimately, it does take a village to go ahead and see the growth and be a part of a team. And it takes great culture as well, as our speaker so eloquently spoke about that. So ultimately, this truly is quite the honor and quite the event to be recognized by the Desi and the state of Massachusetts. Um, but this has been sort of no surprise because we saw the growth happening last year, and then again, it was exponential growth again this year. So keep up the great work, we're proud of you. Um, there's more hurdles to climb, but we are thankful for all that you do.
If, uh, if no one object, I'd like to make a very quick comment from up here. Um, just wanna congratulate to Stockloso, Mr. Cardacey, and everybody, uh, staff in Stockloso for doing a great job. Thank you. In the, in the past, we normally come up and take photos. You wanna do that, uh? All right. All right, no, no photos today, then. All right, well, thank you. Section four, minutes, uh, four point one, the approval of the minutes from the regular, regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting, minutes of order of October first, twenty twenty-five, and to place them on file by Mr. Bahu, second by Mr. Rossi. All in favor? The ayes have it? Permission to enter? Five point one. Permission to enter October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Ms. Doughty, uh, second by Mr. Conway. We have a roll call. Um, Ms. Doughty, I'd like to speak.
Uh, thank you, just one quick, uh, question, I guess it's really not a question, but on page four, uh, there are a number of items, Twenty Twenty Inc., The Bike Connector, Elevate, New England, um, and they're all provided by the Community Schools Grant. I wonder if anybody from the administration could kind of share for the viewing public what those items are. I think that they're worth noting.
Mr. Grant, please.
Sure, um, so the first, the, uh, Twenty Twenty Inc., uh, is actually for our Vision Van for students who services about a hundred and sixty students across the district, um, paid out of the grant, part of the Community Schools Strategy in the district. The Bike Connector, uh, is a great partnership. Um, they are able to provide not only maintenance, but also actual bicycles for students across the district, as well as to families as well. Um, and Elevate, um, has a significant footprint in our district, uh, as a lot of our graduates have gone through the Elevate program, and they do tremendous amount of mentoring and leadership, both at high school and middle school levels. So there, these are probably some of our strongest community partners, um, in my one year here, uh, that are utilized consistently as part of the Community Schools Strategies. We have some others, but these are, um, really embedded into all of our community schools.
Thank you so much for that. And as someone who fought heartily for the Community Schools Program, I believe in it. I've seen it not only in Lowell, but across the country, the impact. I just would like to ask, how many of our schools now are part of the community grant?
Um, there are five community schools. I'm gonna, yes. I have me, yeah.
And they're all middle schools?
No, we have, um, Freshman Academy, uh, we have the Riley, the Sullivan, the Butler, Green Elge, thank you.
Well, that's fantastic, thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes, I just wanted to remark, I was just very happy to see a lot of professional development here for the Laura Lee and the Teacher Apprentice Group. Um, so, but I was wondering if there's any way, and it has really nothing to do with the, um, the, the numbers of the programs, I just really liked how it was, the professional development was carved out for the Laura, the Laura Lee, and that's a unique program. Um, but is there a way for other programs throughout the city, in the schools in the city, to have unique professional development to the type of students that they teach? Or is there still a way that, um, they could fill out professional development forms, um, to go to their own interest of professional development that relates to their, um, their student population?
Um, we do have, um, very focused professional development around student population. So the, the Laura Lee uses the Bright Program essentially to support, you know, the challenging cases that may come, the situations that may result, to support the teachers as well. We have Constellations, um, through the Special Education Department that supports some of our, um, students, our teachers for, of students with autism in some of our programs, as well as our pre-K, um, students as well. Um, we have McLean's Hospital through the Mental Health Department that provides a variety of things, but one of their strands is providing professional development to our school psychologists, as well as providing, um, case consultation as needed, predominantly focused on programs, but there has been situations where it's been school, uh, student that might not be connected to a program. Um, you had a second part to your question.
Could teachers, if they found a professional development that really pertained to the student population that they're teaching, could they then, is there a way that they could register or put in a slip so that they could attend that? And is there any way we can make that more public for them?
We have the Purple Form for, I don't know if you wanna, what, we have the Purple Form, essentially it's kind of known as, which is a Google form that, um, teachers will fill out, or staff will fill out if they're interested in. We have to, I, of course, identified the funding source for that. Uh, a lot of our staff attend MPY, Massachusetts Partners for Youth. The, a lot of the training through there, we're a member of that as well for the district. Um, and they have pretty much open access for most, not all of those, um, trainings as well. And then I think it, and correct me if I'm wrong, some of it is also principal-dependent or department-dependent in terms of what's available and what the initiative might be for that year as well.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I do wanna do one correction, I forgot the Career Academy is a community schools, my apologies, there is six.
So roll call.
Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mayor Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Five yeas, two absent.
Memorials, six point one, Edward James Kennedy Junior, Massachusetts State Senator, former mayor, and City Council of Lowell, and also chairperson, chairman for the Lowell School Committee. I'd like to ask if, uh, if anyone like to, uh, have anything to say, 'cause I have a couple of things to say. And if no one object, I'm gonna stay, play from up here. Thank you. So, um, first of all, as a vice chair for the school committee, uh, every now and then, I have a, an honor to chair a meeting like tonight. So I'm not, I'm not sure I will have another chance to do this again before the term is over. Uh, so, standing up here, I'd like to thank each, every one of you for, uh, electing me as a vice chair. Ms. Martin, Ms. Doughty, Mr. Rossi, Mr. Conway, and Mr. Bahu, for casting your vote. Um, so thank you. Before we, uh, dock in the chamber and take a moment of silence in honor of Senator Ed Kennedy, a life taken too soon, I would like to start by stating the obvious. Senator Kennedy touched so many through his many years of public service. Since the new, the news of his passing, we have all heard from countless individuals, groups, organizations who have expressed their gratitude for Senator Kennedy as a great person, a proud mayor, a proud chairman of the school committee, and many more roles throughout his long career, especially his role as a state senator for the first Middlesex District. He was a champion in passing the Student Opportunities Act, a great supporter of UMass Lowell, Middlesex Community College, all K to twelve schools, including the VOG, Adult Ed, the High School Project, Girls Inc., Boys and Girls Club, CTI, Project Learned, Girls in Tech, UTech, CMAA, Ankle Dance Troop, Lowell Housing Authority, Coalition for the Better Acre, the Mayor's Holiday Fest for homeless youth, the Bridge Program, Win Fan, and there are many more that I can't think of, but I'm sure there are more. Senator Kennedy had a deep passion for life. He was very physically fit and had probably hiked and skied more mountains than any one of us. Like anyone that knew him, I'm gonna miss his stories. He loved telling stories about going to see the Rolling Stones, his love for Jack Kerouac, how much he enjoyed a plate of clam rolls at Captain John's, or any dish at Alfreska's, and of course, corned beef at Kil'kenny, Cap's Copper Kettle, and so forth. Personally, Senator Ed Kennedy was like a wind, a, a wind beneath my wings. I am standing here today as your vice chair because of Senator Ed Kennedy's guidance. I did not feel that I worked for him, but instead, he made me feel that I was working with him. Senator Kennedy stood on my side during hard times. He showed me the rope to the Massachusetts State House. Every trip that we rode together in my car, to and from the State House, was an experience that I couldn't get anywhere else. Every conversation, he gave me confidence and encouraged me to do more. That is something that can be said by anyone fortunate enough to have known him. He never put anyone down, and he never said bad things. He was a great senator and public servant because he, he included everyone. He was always too busy on the positive to concentrate on the negative. It was, and is the honor of a lifetime to know Senator Kennedy as a person to look up to. Our thoughts and, at this time of, with his family, especially his grandkids, who were, who were the light of his life. He will be greatly missed. Senator Ed Kennedy, may your soul rest in peace. Now, everyone, could you please join me for a moment of silence? Please dock in the chamber. Motion, seven point one. Motion by Mr. Conway. Request the superintendent or his designee to contact the city manager's office to discuss replacing the tennis courts slash backboards at Shed Park. Second, by Ms. Martin, Mr. Conway.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, uh, through you to, uh, the superintendent. I went out there at the Shed Park, uh, a few weeks ago, and I thought I would hit some balls against the, uh, the backboard, uh, kind of tune things up a bit, and I was shocked at how they looked. And I took some pitches on it, and it was, it was incredible. Uh, talk about a safety issue. I actually have some pitches, uh, which I won't share at this particular time, but I put my foot down next to one of the cracks that went through the entire, uh, the entire court. And I would say it was probably an inch and a half wide and an inch and a half deep. I mean, that's, that's a definitely a, a, a major problem. You know, it's a problem for the fact that, you know, our student athletes could certainly hurt themselves. Uh, and, um, we have other schools coming in from all over the place to play, and they see that. And, and I will say that, um, uh, you know, I wouldn't be surprised that down the road, you might have some of the, uh, MVC schools that might refuse to play under these, uh, conditions. Because if I recall, I think it happened in Methuen, where they ran into a problem and they had to transport the boys and the girls teams to another court because they did not wanna play on, uh, against, uh, against Methuen. So, and I think the other thing, what, uh, you, you can't really repair those courts either. I mean, I've seen, there's some pitches and it looked like, it looked like you and I tried to put it together and, and to make it, uh, make it better. But as soon as the winter comes, forget it. It just automatically heaves up and you've got these, these deep holes there. Um, the, uh, it's my understanding, uh, Mr. Superintendent, that the US TA, Tennis Association, uh, is going back into the schools. Now, they've done this a number of times, I think, in the past. So they're coming into schools and offering grants. So I think it might be, uh, it well worth us reaching out to them, uh, to find out whether we, uh, could perhaps, uh, get some of those grants and, uh, and see if we can replace these, these courts. Because again, I don't believe they do it every year, but, uh, I get tipped off that they, they thought they were gonna be coming out for this year coming up, and it might be a good idea to take a look at it. The other thing is, too, is I think it would be wise for us to reach out to the coaches. Who better would know about courts and how to do things, especially, uh, with the, the girls, uh, coach? And I know you, um, uh, Mr. Superintendent knows her, uh, Mrs., uh, Ms. Jen Hatum. And, uh, she's been on the courts for fifty years, since she was just a little baby, and went all over the country and competed, and her father, father and her are the national champs and the father-daughter. And I, I know I've had the, the, uh, uh, opportunity to hit against her, um, which was not pleasant on my side. It was painful. Uh, so anyway, I think it might be good to reach out to somebody like that, who has a much better understanding and knowledge about courts, and the possibility of how do we perhaps gain some, uh, financial support from, uh, the US TA? Or she might have some other ideas on organizations. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye, and all opposed? The ayes have it? Motion pass. Seven point two, motion by Mr. Bahu. Have the superintendent and his admin, administration share a report on how many students have been approved for homeschooling in each of the last three years? How many are the same students? Supports LPS offers to the How many are the same students? Supports LPS offers to those students and families? And do we have LPS contacting the family during the school year? Second by Mr. Rossi. Mr. Bahu, you can speak to it.
So, this motion essentially speaks for itself, but essentially, I have been campaigning, and I ran into three households that homeschool their children, and they were asking if there were any resources available from the school, and that they really have not had any contact from the school after they had gotten approved to homeschool their children. So, I feel like, you know, as much as we have a school, a 15,000-person school, pupil school district to run, it's important that we serve all of our community. So, if we could go, and so the question becomes, is are we reaching out to the people, to these parents, to the homeschool teachers? Are we supporting them as well as, you know, what have those numbers looked like in the past three years? Meaning, have they grown? Have they been stagnant? And lastly, are they the same students, or are some students coming in the school district and going out of the school district? So, that's essentially the report that I'm looking for, so that we can begin to offer some support.
All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion pass. Subcommittee 8.1, approval of minutes of the Finance Subcommittee meeting of September 30th, 2025. Chairman, Mr. Bahu.
On September 30th, 2025, we had a Finance Subcommittee meeting. In attendance were myself, Ms. Martin, and Mr. Conway, as well as Ms. Doherty. We reviewed the maintenance of effort. That was the only topic on the agenda that evening. And Dr. Pinto essentially shared with us that, you know, the meeting was to clarify the City of Lowell's financial obligations to the school district, and how the city contribution is underfunded, and the ongoing discussions of what we're having to begin to progress, progress within the schools, I'm sorry, within government, to show us the full maintenance of effort charges, where they come up with those charges, and what we are to look for as far as the charges that are being charged towards the school district. We spoke about nondiscretionary expenses, such as administrative services and employee retirement programs. We spoke about discretionary expenses, which are health services, non-employee insurance, operation of maintenance in school facilities, and we also spoke about certain services that were not counted towards net school spending. The maintenance of effort charge was to be certified by September 30th, but Dr. Pinto did ask the state for a extension so that we could go over the document. This is a part of the document. It's 300 pages, and he shared with us that he's been having regular meetings with the CFO and his staff at City Hall to discuss what these charges are. Ultimately, it is our obligation to approve the charges soon enough, but to also understand where the charges are not only coming from, but how we can go ahead and work with the city to define best practices for both parties to be able to fund the school districts properly. There was a, we had a City of Lowell, and the LPS hadn't had a new proposal or a new, for the lack of a better word, discussion about the maintenance of effort since 2011. So, ultimately, we are looking to go ahead and proceed to begin to redefine, as well as begin to purpose the best practices, so that the City of Lowell and the school committee could go ahead and be on the same page and begin to look for the proper charges and identify exactly the direction that this maintenance of effort will be going in.
We need a motion to accept the report as report of progress by Ms. Doherty, and second by Ms. De Rossi. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Nine, reports of the superintendent, respond to motion by Jackie Doherty, May 21st, 2025, regarding maintenance of effort from the city and prior to certification update. Any comments? Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for this report. I do feel encouraged that the city is working closely with the schools on this issue. I don't think it's any secret as we've seen our cash contribution go down, the importance of keeping an eye on maintenance of effort and making sure that it's accurate, consistent, accessible. Those are all very important going forward. And I just have a quick question, and then I actually want to make a motion to make sure, and I could make the motion right now if you want. My motion is that the school committee continues to have an ongoing role in this annual review of the maintenance of effort prior to the district's end-of-the-year report. That we, this gets reported out to this body annually. You know, it doesn't have, I know you're going to be meeting regularly, and I think that's absolutely the way to do it, whether it's quarterly or whatnot, but the school committee continues to have a role in overseeing the maintenance of effort in that part of it. That would be my motion. And I think I need a second on that.
You have a second? I have a motion on the floor, second by Mr. Bahu. Madam Pluck, do you have a motion?
What is the role prior to, you said, school committee continues to have an ongoing role prior to?
To the end-of-the-year report being submitted.
End-of-the-year report.
And I do have a question, but I'm open to whatever Superintendent Skinner would like to say.
I want to ensure that Ms. Doherty's motion is practical, and my suggestion is that for the, for our motion reports, we have a series of periodic motions, some that we report to the committee every quarter, some that are reported annually, and so on. If it suits Ms. Doherty and the committee, we'll add this item to the list of annual reports to be reported out in, let's say, September. And we understand that you're looking for input on the maintenance of effort report prior to the certification of that report.
Right.
So, that suggests to you that it would be an annual report in September, added to the motions that we're doing.
And let me just ask you and the body, do you think it would be worth having regular updates, quarterly updates, or, I mean, how, I don't want to leave it to the last minute because we know the city's pulling the information together, but I don't want to make it onerous on you either, so.
Thank you. We are hopeful that we will eventually get to a point with the city where we have quarterly updates and more periodic updates with the city, and as we receive them, we can report them out to the committee without too much trouble.
Okay. So, then, if I could just follow with, I have a quick question or two about the actual report that's in front of us. When the Finance Subcommittee met, we noticed there were a couple discrepancies, that there were charges that seemed to be similar, but in one case, it was quite a bit more expensive than another case. And I noticed in the wording here that you're saying that you're asking to move forward with okaying the end-of-the-year report for the state, and that these have been checked and verified. Does that mean that all those discrepancies and questions were answered, or that it's an ongoing process? Because you do mention earlier in the report that you're working towards further refinement for accessibility, like one of the things, not having the pages numbered, you know, things like that, or how much time was spent to replace a toilet or whatever. So, I guess it's really, so, did we resolve those discrepancies, or are we moving forward to be able to not have those confusions? I don't know if that's
We can have Dr. Pinto report if you wish. Dr. Pinto, please.
Thanks, Mrs. Doherty. Yes, so this means that it's going to be an ongoing discussion. So, as part of our quarterly reporting, or we're having a meeting later this month, we're going to review some of those inconsistencies and seek clarification. We're also going to seek a uniform, a more uniform reporting process. So, a little, more detailed descriptions so that we can differentiate between services when they're offered.
And again, I want to start by saying, I think that, you know, the city's cooperation in this effort is very important to me, right? But I want to end by saying, a $10 million cash contribution to the education of our children is deplorable. It is not enough cash because maintenance of effort does not pay salaries, does not pay curriculum, and so we need to keep our eye on this information. And I really am leaving that up to all of you because I'm not going to be here, but I do really hope that you agree with me. I'm done. Sorry, thank you.
Do you want to keep your motion?
Sorry?
Do you want to keep the motion?
Oh, absolutely, because the motion says we're going forward, the school committee is part of this, and up to when you're getting those regularly updates, share them with the committee, share them with the community.
Would you like to modify by adding the report that the city is report to school committee regularly?
No, I think I'm going to leave it how the superintendent said it, that as they get updates from the city, they will share them with the school committee. Of course, if we're not getting updates and my colleagues have concerns, we can, you know, you could bring that to the forefront. But we do need to stay on top of this issue. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion pass.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Conway.
I'd like to suspend the rules to allow some parents that have been waiting here to speak on the Safety Subcommittee, the new Safety Subcommittee that is coming forward.
Are we moving?
That's 10.1.
10.1? We're going to, motion to suspend the rule?
They, yes.
By Mr., second by Mr. Bahu.
They did not sign up.
And suspend the rule and to take?
Right.
And allow speaker to speak on 10.1?
Correct.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. 10.1. Safety Subcommittee memo.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Felicita Espinal. Soy líder comunitaria en la ciudad de Lowell por más de 20 años. En la 564 Market Street, en Lowell, Massachusetts. Hello, my name is Felicita Espinal, and I live in 564 Market Street, here in the city of Lowell. And this is the letter for the Lowell School Committee, and it says as follows, "Greetings. My name is Felicita Espinal, and I am the parent of a student in the Lowell Public Schools. I am writing to share a personal concern about safety at the Lowell High School. Recently, I had the opportunity to visit the Lowell High School Building with another adult, and I was very surprised by how easy it was to enter the school. No one asked us for identification for the reason for our visit when we first entered. We were able to walk through the hallways and pass by students until we ourselves went to the main office, and it was only there that we were finally asked for an ID. This experience left me very worried about the safety of all young people who attend the school. I know the school is very new and beautiful, and that the city made a major investment in the building by building it. However, I believe the safety has not received, I believe, I'm sorry, that safety has not received the same level of attention. In a building this large with so many students, there should be stronger measures in place to protect them, such as metal detectors at the entrance or stricter visitor screening procedures. I also believe it is important to offer more after-school programs after 2:30 PM, so that students have positive opportunities to spend their free time. Without these options, many teenagers may fall into negative or unsafe situations. Providing sports, art, and other academic activities will help them stay engaged in healthy and productive ways. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the school committee to consider reinforcing safety measures at Lowell High School and expanding after-school program opportunities. I share this concern out of genuine care for the safety and well-being of our children. Thank you sincerely for your time, attention, and dedication to our community. Sincerely, Felicita Espinal." There's also one more thing she wants to say. I am a parent and community leader in Lowell, and I have grandkids in different public schools in Lowell. I have heard different stories from my followers, the community concerning safety in the schools, about fights, bullying, and unsafe conditions. I have talked to several officials from the school committee, but they refused to consider metal detectors as a safety measure. And I have talked about the issue before, and I have left with no answers. So, please consider this petition from a parent, you know, from Lowell, with a student in Lowell High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak? Anyone else? All right. Need a motion? Can you please state your name and your address?
My name is Amada Gregory. I live in?
Three minutes.
I live in 246 Market Street. I run for city council 2023, D34. I just want to say that I call some time the student left behind, because there's a lot of students. Last year, I approached the, some of the school committees and also police department because a lot of students, it was out, out of the school, staying out and fighting a lot. Meanwhile, there's, you know, they're supposed to be in school. I'm concerned about that. Also, I'm concerned about not only high school, but the through your old school. There's a lot of kids is left behind. Why? Because they've been bullying, and they do not want to go back to school. So, the parents, it was students from elementary school through middle school. And I know a few kids that stay home because the bullying, and they don't want to go to school. They're left behind because nobody advocated for them. And I please, Superintendent, our school committee, I invite you to go and visit the whole community and see what's going on. I know that you, you know, you're very busy, but knowing your community is would be much better. I please do not leave the kids behind. There's a lot of kids left behind, a lot of parents left behind. So, please, you know, do much better with the kids. They need you, and we need them. Because they're the one that is going to be maybe one day the president of the United States, or one day the school committee, or the mayor. So, we need them. We need to support them. We need to empower them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, need a motion to approve the Safety Subcommittee. That was Mr. Bahu, right? Mr. Conway? I'd like to speak to it, Mr. Conway.
On the Subcommittee now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's, it certainly, it's needed. I was surprised at our last school committee meeting where we were talking about putting a safety measure into a Subcommittee, and we were fumbling around on which one it would go to, and I just assumed it would go to the safety one. And I was a little surprised that it had been eliminated, and that's why I thought that, you know, especially in today's situation, you know, you know, we have to make, we have to make our schools as safe as we possibly can and our communities. And as I've often said, you know, when a, when a parent or a grandparent or a guardian sends that child off to the school, they want to make sure, do they... They want to make sure they're learning, but what's most important is to make sure that they're safe and they come back home safe, too. We all, we all want that. And that's why I'm glad that, that we decided to bring, restate, reinstate the Safety Subcommittee because it's certainly, this is where we have the opportunity to vet out situations. For example, these parents that came up here to speak, you know, they certainly could go now to, you know, a Subcommittee. We could put motions on, and that they can get the answers. Because sometimes, let's face it, you make telephone calls, and, you know, you probably don't... Some, in many cases, you might not get the telephone call back. I know. I've, I've been there. I think we all have been there. So parents want to make sure that the schools are as safe as possible. And, and I thank the speakers that come up here that, that voice their opinion and to show how very important it is. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
A roll call? Second by Mr. Bahu.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Going back to... We go back to 9.2. Response to motion by Mr. Conway. October 1st, 2025, regarding bike rack information. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And thank you, Assistant Superintendent Crocker, for the, for the report. Truly, I appreciate this. It's something that I really never even thought about. The parent came up and mentioned it, and I think, and again, I'm glad that we did a, a survey, and it looks like there's a lot of schools that do not have bike racks. And I wonder, in here, when we talk about the grant opportunities, I wonder, Assistant Superintendent Crocker, could you, could you speak on that and elaborate that so the parents understand what, what we're going to be trying to maybe accomplish on this, and so that all our schools might have the bike racks?
Ms. Crocker, please. Thank you, yes. I do, this is a great motion, and I appreciate the motion. It gave us an opportunity to look at what we have for an inventory right now. So as you can see in the response, we have bike racks at all of our middle schools and our K-8s. And we have, what I'll describe at Lowell High School is, we listed it as one in the main campus, but it's a very long series of new bike stands, which I did go over myself to look at. And there were very adequate empty spaces where additional bikes or scooters could be stored there. So what, what we seem to have at the high school right now seems to be sufficient for the demand that, that is in front of them. Our elementary schools do not have bike racks. So that was pretty universal unless you happen to be a K, one of the K-8 schools. And so we are a member district with Safe Roots to Schools. Every one of our schools has been registered, was registered in the Safe Roots to School system last June, which makes us eligible for applications to some of their grant programs. Some of them require us to be a member for six months, but the bike rack grant does not require us to be a member for six months. So this opportunity has been advertised to leaders, and we are encouraging leaders. It's a very short window, two-week window, where they can get in and apply for the grant funds. We don't know how much is available. They haven't released sort of the, the scope of the grant, and we don't know how much we would qualify for. But it is a great opportunity for us, for the schools that have that space and have a place to put it. There are some of those parameters that you have, have to meet certain criteria in the grant application in order to qualify. But it is a great opportunity for us to, to, you know, encourage more biking or scootering to schools and making sure that kids have a safe place to lock up their bikes.
Is the grants, is the grant money available each year? Is this something that if we don't get a certain amount this year, we can piggyback on next year?
Mr. Conway, I hope. But in this current climate, I'm not certain that any grant money is guaranteed year to year. However, I do think that this has been available through this agency in the past. This is the first year that all of our schools are member districts, or all of the schools in our districts are members and eligible now to apply for this grant.
Well, I'm glad that we're reaching out, and at least, you know, that's the first step, and that's, that's an important step, and then we can go from there. And you don't have any control on the monies that are available, obviously. But I think that, you know, when parents know that we're trying to make this happen for all the schools, I think that's extremely important. So thank you for the report. I appreciate that.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I just got to share one thing. From my perspective, I looked at this as a fairness issue because I, as a parent, I don't know if I want my elementary student biking to school. But the Bartlett School is a middle school. It's a K-12, a K-8 school, and they do not have bike racks. And the Career Academy, which is a high school, does not have bike racks. And I think that's a fairness issue for this district that we need, just like we've had conversations on this floor about, we've had the Bartlett community up here numerous times about the elevators, about the, the parking problems, about the lockers, the horrible lockers they had for a number of years. And none of this administration is responsible for that. This is, but it's an ongoing concern. And to look at this report and say, you've got the Bartlett, the Career Academy, which has often also been a facility that's not kept up to par with some of our other facilities. That's what stood out to me on this report, and I would think if the Bartlett and the Career Academy can't get bike racks, we should be providing them with bike racks. That's my thought on that. Thank you.
9.3. Response to motion by Fred Bahu, September 17, 2025, regarding attendance and grade advancement.
Sure. I put in this motion a few weeks ago, and I thank you for your response. There's a lot to it. It covers elementary schools as well as middle schools. It discusses retention of students and how the stigma could be that, of a failure and staying back, and so on and so forth, which, you know, doesn't sit well with a student. And it, it covers ground in the sense of what you need for a passing score, a passing score of 65 or better to go ahead and move, progress forward. 60 to 64, it states that you must attend summer school. So I guess that's the first thing that I'd like to touch on. Is, is summer school mandatory for students that are getting the grade of a 60 to 64? Or is it optional, and ultimately, are they provisionally retained, or will they progress to the next grade? And I'm going to ask that on two different counts. One will be for middle school, and then the second one will be for elementary school. Because I'm not sure if it's mandatory that an elementary school student goes to summer school. So if, I could have an answer for that, that'd be great.
Certainly. Ms. Crocker, please. Sure. Mr. Bahu, thank you. So the, in response to the first part of your question around middle school, it is, students at the 60 to 64 range are provisionally retained, and they do need to attend one of our summer programs in order to qual, and successfully complete that program in order to qualify for promotion. For elementary students, our elementary students are not graded on the 100-point scale. They are a standards-based report card. The, the points range from 1 to 5. And so that system does not apply for the elementary students in terms of earning a particular passing grade. So the elementary students, you, you know, the policy is in there, but it is not equivalent. It's an equivalent policy to the middle school because there is not that same grading system.
Sure. So if we have a student that is missing school regularly, regularly, and I look at your report from July 16th, the KPI report, and the attendance in the fourth, the fourth quarter, it looks like chronic absent rates for first graders is 17%. So if ultimately they're not coming to school, what types of, or 17% are chronically absent is how I should look at it. What type of criteria are we doing to support them so that they're not falling behind? Because ultimately, if they're missing school more than 25 times, and I understand it could be due to, you know, illness and doctor's notes and major health concerns, when they come back, is there, and they're coming back into that exact same classroom, the teacher has to get that student caught up. And they have a paraprofessional in that classroom, and I'm sure they, you know, try to work it in that sense. However, that student could be pretty far behind. And then if they, you know, don't go back to school for the following week, they fall behind even more. So I'm curious, is there any type of a transitional program that we could offer for the, the students who are chronically absent? Because don't forget, you know, if you're in the first grade, or the second grade, or the third grade, and you're chronically absent, then you begin to fall behind. And sometimes you can fall behind as far as a year. And if you're falling behind a year and you're in the third grade, you actually have second grade abilities, and you're not really progressing throughout the school system. So, you know, there are a lot of questions here, and I know, you know, the last thing we want to do is keep students back. But, you know, any thoughts on what we can do to assist a student that's chronically absent in the elementary level?
Sure thing. We, I did note in the report that we have two, two major bodies that, in each school, that sort of oversee these concerns, one being the Teacher Assistance Team, the TAT team. If you, if you talk to a teacher in Lowell, you're going to hear about the TAT process. And so that's when they bring a team of people together, the classroom teacher, it may be a social worker, a school administrator, any relevant parties to talk about what the attendance concerns are. We try and get to the root cause of that. As noted in this report, there are some, just because the Department of Education may classify an individual as chronically absent, doesn't mean that in our own policy that they are in violation because our policy distinguishes between excused and unexcused absences. So things with medical notes, et cetera, are excused in our, under our guidelines. So there's a little bit of, you know, discrepancy between what Lowell, our policy states and how DESI defines chronic absenteeism. Nonetheless, we know that student performance is impacted significantly when you miss school. Recent data that came out from the Department of Education this past week is that students at MCAS testing grade levels, so three and up, if they are chronically absent, which is missing any combination of 18 days or more, they lose half a category's performance level. So in the meeting performance level, it's about, there are spans of 30 points in each performance level, and they lose 14 average points if you meet that chronic absenteeism threshold. So it's a really compelling number. So what I will say is that schools, schools go all out to try and get kids into school and then get kids caught up. So a few things that we introduced this year, one major thing, because you highlighted first grade, is that we are the recipient of a major Grade 1 tutoring grant. So we are bringing in, it's already started in our schools, the Ignite Program. And that is a personalized, one-on-one virtual tutor, a human being on the other end, with a very specific skill set and training in filling in gaps in foundational reading skills. We've piloted that program last year at the Lincoln and McAuliffe Schools with some good success, and we were fortunate enough to qualify for an abundance of seats for Ignite tutoring for Grade 1 this year. So much so that if we have additional seats, we can go up to grades 2, 3, or 4 and, and use those additional spots for those students that may be behind. We have our building-based tutors. So every school employs a cadre of part-time tutors, generally 15 hours a week, coming in and taking set groups that rotate throughout the year. So as a student may get behind, they may not have been in tutoring to start the year, but if they're behind, they're going to get put into a tutoring group at a point of assessment or as a result of one of those TAT meetings. And then our attendance teams, which Ms. Brown-Legrand oversees the attendance office, there is a very tight protocol. I think we all know that DESI has modeled our, our attendance initiatives and highlighted the Greenwich School as a, as a pillar of, an exemplar for the, the flow chart of steps that we go through, which are very comprehensive to, to get students in school and attending regularly. So the superintendent talks often about a culture of continuous improvement, and one of the pillars under that are safety nets. And what you're talking about is where are the safety nets for these students? And those are some of the ones that we use.
Sure. And I, and I thank you for that. And I can understand, and I was thinking about what the reflection is on MCAS scores, I'm sorry, yeah, and what the reflection is on MCAS scores to students that are chronically absent. And I'm not going to take anything away from the attendance team or the Teacher Assistance Attendance Team because we know they are doing their work and are making phone calls and speaking to parents and helping students come to school and give them that proper guidance. But I saw, you know, I also question some of these unexcused absences or excused absences. Because, you know, I, I know parents can sometimes write a note. And if they write a note, that would be considered an excused absence. And how many notes can they write? And then the question now becomes, is that student next year having a high volume of absences as well? So, you know, once we get into that rotation of not coming to school regularly, and again, back to that report, the KPI report, when we get to the eighth grade and the seventh grade, the, the chronic absence rate really balloons. So I mean, ultimately, you know, I, I think I'd love to see this go to Curriculum Subcommittee so that we could have, you know, more of a discussion about that. So I'm not sure if any of my fellow school committee members would like to go ahead and discuss that because ultimately, this is a very large item that we should really pay close attention to. And it sounds like you're paying very close attention to, but it might be better for the school committee to wrap their head around it as well because we want to not only support teachers, we want to not only want to support students, we want to support the whole system across the board. Any thoughts on that?
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yeah, I also know from my own childhood going to Lowell Public Schools that there's also Saturday school that you guys have for makeup. So there's a lot of cushions around trying to hold students accountable to make sure that they know it's important to come to school and to make up that time and to try, try to make up that academic time. So I do think it's a bigger issue than just talking about it right here. But if we can kind of incorporate what all of that looks like into a Subcommittee meeting, I think that would be important. Because it's not as though you're not putting it all out there. You're putting it all out there, but if parents aren't working with you and students aren't, what's the, I think, what's the next level, right? And there's only so much we can implement besides forcing somebody, right? And that's, that's the fine line, right?
Yes, Ms. Del Rossi, we also have the Tutoring and Engagement Center that will access when needed. And we have, Ms. Brown-Legrand's team has done a great job working with the local pediatricians at Greater Lowell Community Health Center and some of the other local providers to educate them about just kind of giving notes and what that sort of does in terms of the impact on a student's overall academic performance. And so we've been able to, you know, sort of recover from that a little bit post-pandemic. And you're absolutely right that there are layers and layers of interventions that happened before we would get to referring a family to, say, the court system for a failure to compel. But we do have measures that go all the way to that level for, you know, systemic chronic absenteeism that has not been successfully resolved with all of the other layers of intervention in between.
So, Ms. Martin, I believe you're in charge of the Curriculum Subcommittee. So could we...
Miss, may I offer just an alternative?
Sure.
If the school committee can make their own choice. Mr. Bahu, you happen to be chairperson of the School Improvement Subcommittee that Ms. Crocker also is the representative to. And so you have that choice if you wish to take it. The Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee is chaired by Ms. Martin and the representative is Dr. Fox Roy. So those, I think, are each suitable options, depending which one you want to choose.
Well, why don't we just go ahead and move that? See, that's my motion. And I'm sort of driving this bus. And we'll leave Ms. Martin, you know, to go out and campaign. And we can go ahead and have a School Improvement Subcommittee and have a deeper discussion about this very important matter. Thank you for your guidance, Mr. Skinner.
So motion to send it to the Subcommittee? All in favor, say aye. Need a second? Exactly. Need a second? Second by Ms. Doughty. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. 9.4. Adult Education and Family Literacy Grants Update. Any comments or questions? Need a motion to accept-- Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Could we just, you know, I'd look through this quickly and there's certainly some reduction looking at the 2026 numbers. Could you just kind of chart out for me the actual impact that these reductions will have?
Superintendent?
I'm going to refer to Dr. Pinto, please.
Sorry, Ms. Martin. Could you provide some more detail around the specificity of the impact? Is that what you're looking for?
So your report to me tells me that there's 63.54 percentage decrease over prior years in 2026 from the federal funding source. That's your report to me. On the second page of your report-- I'm assuming this is the state funds from DESI-- it's showing 20% decrease in 2026. So could you tell me what the impact of that is in terms of our ability to provide adult education?
So, Ms. Martin, I'd like to take a little more time on that and connect with the adult education provider and discuss this further so that I can provide you with more information.
I think that's a great idea. I'm going to say, when you're providing this kind of information, I appreciate numbers. That's great. It doesn't tell us anything. It doesn't tell us what the real impact is. So just moving forward, it would be great to have that information provided the first go-around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to accept the reports of the Superintendent, 9.1 through 9.4, as reports of progress by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Doughty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passed. Home education. We need a motion to approve home education by Mr. Bahu, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Six ayes, one absent.
10.2. Approval to accept and expand allocated fiscal year 2026 awards. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Del Rossi. Your roll call.
Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi? Six ayes, one absent.
10.3. Budget modification request. Need a motion to approve the budget modification award by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Doughty. Roll call.
Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Six ayes, one absent.
Convention conference request. Need a motion to bundle and approve the convention conference request by Mr. Bahu, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Okay. Six ayes, one absent.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Doughty, second by Ms. Del Rossi.